So I move that we move public comments to the first item on the agenda.
Second.
Hi.
Can I ask that?
Sorry about that.
Like hundred million dollar project.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Parkes. I'm in Dover Lane. First of all, I just wanted to thank superintendent's degrees and the board of education. I know this was a very long, very arduous, very thankless process. I wasn't aware that you all had viewed as many options as we had. In fact, it became the three options that we reviewed last Tuesday. First of all, I wanted to thank you for that and for educating me and for educating all the public as well. We weren't aware that you had gone through that process. I was very concerned, as Joan mentioned, as others mentioned, at the options that were presented and favored last Tuesday. My concern is exactly the same as what Joan mentioned. That is, that the second referendum does not pass. That's a pretty big risk. As Bennett Pudlin mentioned, it does yield a nearly five and a half million dollar additional burden to the town. It does potentially, if that second referendum doesn't pass, put two-thirds of this town's kids in equitable position, right? So if there were a way somehow to guarantee that we would have that second referendum in the future, I think that would be far preferable. Tom, I think your comment is well taken, and I agree with you that there is a concern of smoothing things out. You know, sticker shop is an issue for people if you put it all in one referendum. It's a very valid point. However, as Jo Lynn mentioned, most of the people that were there on Tuesday night said, "We're game. We're up for this." I do have a petition here of eighty-three Madison residents, not all Democrats, Democrats, Republicans, and unaffiliateds, that said, "We would prefer not to split it this way." That we would actually either take option two combined or some other way of ensuring that Jeffrey and Meyerson get done and we can guarantee that. So I would like to submit that petition for the meeting minutes. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Rosenthal. I live at Seven Sheffield Lane. I have been following this process, and I've been very grateful for all the hard work the board of education has done, the consultants. I've been impressed by their presentations. Colleagues go with all the options. I have two small children. They will not be positively impacted by any of these options. If anything, they will never see the inside of a renovated elementary school regardless. So I have no skin in this game. But after reviewing the options very closely and listening to all of the comments, I just I don't understand option three. It just doesn't make sense to me. And from what again we heard tonight, there's just so many assumptions and things that are unknown about this plan. Even people speaking today, "Well, if this happens, we're not sure what this reimbursement will be. We're not sure what these grant applications and state situations and the will of the voters." It seems risky. We don't know, you know, as people have mentioned, if the second referendum doesn't pass, what happens to the children at Island? You know, do they stay at Island? Do they move to Jeffrey without renovations? I'm not sure. It's just more instability for those kids at Island, I think, and I don't think that's fair. I think we have a better option, an option two, that's equitable, that's more effective, that's more cost efficient. And I think I think you're underestimating the will of the voters and making a strong decision for our schools and for our town. And I just encourage you to to think about all of those factors when making a decision. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Brown. I'm with the 531 Green Hill Road. I'd like to echo the comments of everybody else that I've heard this evening in that my biggest concern is that with the choice of option three, in lieu of option two, that the second referendum will never happen. We have zero assurance from the Board of Ed, who may not even be the same people in two years once we put this on. We have zero assurance from the Board of Selectmen as of yet that we will see another referendum for Jeffrey. I have a four-year-old who's set to go into Jeffrey as a kindergartner in 2018. I have a six-week-old who's also set to go into Jeffrey four years later. And similar to Emily, my four-year-old will never see a renovated school. He will live through all of this construction. He will not be impacted positively. I would just I'm curious to see, since option three is a choice, what is the town's plan to ensure that we actually see a referendum for Jeffrey two years from this point? Thank you.
Any other comments of a different nature?
Everybody will be staying here for the whole meeting, so there is another public comments section at the end. So if something occurs, you know, during the meeting.
We are in public citizen comments at this point. Anybody have anything else? Hearing none?
This is, yes.
My name is Walter Lutman. I've been in Madison for twenty-five years. I'd like to bring up a couple of points. One, I just want to say that I called the Board of Selectmen yesterday, Sunday, and he responded to something that I thought was a safety issue in regards to the town. They were started to do over Duck Hill Road going down from the connector down to River Road, and whoever was in charge, being the contractor and the town representative, failed to share that about fifteen hundred to two thousand pieces of rock were left on the road. You've seen this. Eileen already guessed what was in the bag when I walked in here tonight. But I thought this was a disgrace that both the contractor left this way, at least fifteen hundred to two thousand pieces of— Tom, you saw it with your own eyes. And I mean, I don't get any joy out of calling somebody at home on a Sunday, but I thought it was a safety issue.
Not you, me.
I told you at home, and you responded. I have no argument with that. But I was very, very upset about this, amongst other things. We have a lot of issues in this town. Obviously, the schools are a very important issue, but so is public safety. And I wouldn't want to be somebody who had an accident because of this. And I also feel that the town was responsible. Whoever was the supervisor of this, the clerk that it works or whatever, should never have left that in that condition for the weekend. Okay, so I think that you will probably deal with that in your own way. There's a couple of other issues also. One of the things I've been trying to get done is clean up the post road prior to coming to Hammond asset. Although it's a state piece of property, there's more brush in there and junk in there, and it doesn't look good at all. Also, we've had to clean up in town, right? But if we can remind people downtown especially to keep it clean. The garbage cans were overflowing for the first time in a long time, two weeks ago. Also, do we have the streets we do back in existence yet? Okay. Because downtown has to be swept behind downtown, you know, behind, and then the streets, because we have leaves and debris and all of that on our street alone. But I thank you for responding to this issue the other day. Oh, one of us, if you don't mind me asking, have you established a program in regards to drug testing?
You're the wrong unit.
I know, but I could come to your office, but at the same time—
I'm not going to steal your time.
Okay, well, let me just say, I brought up to the Board of Education twice in regards to drug testing, all drug and alcohol testing of all prospective employees, whether it's teachers, custodians, drivers, or whatever. At first, I was told it's against the law. Well, after that was put aside, that it's not against the law. On March 7th, I made a statement before the Board of Education that from this date forward, nobody gets hired by the Board of Education without being drug tested. And if not a violation of union rules, they're not an employee of any union until they're hired, okay? The town puts everybody through drug testing. And as far as I'm concerned, even though I never had children in Madison school system and won't, the fact that our children are our most valuable valuable anything you want to call, and I don't see any reason for this Board of Ed to hesitate one moment and not hire anybody without drug testing them. And I think also in the future, both the town and Board of Ed should put in the contracts before we sign another contract that random drug testing take place. Thank you very much.
We can keep our rocks, right?
Those are rejected paperwork.
I'd like to ask for your rights and political allegiance.
My allegiance.
United States of America, the true republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just as for all.
Thank you.
Get out of here.
I'd like to ask for number two approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2017. I'd like to move approval, and I'd like to especially thank Laura. This was a very difficult set of minutes, and I think you did a wonderful job.
I second that.
I second the motion as well. Second, Laura.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We also have minutes from the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop, January 28th, February 16th, February 16th, February 22nd, and March 2nd and March 6th. Move approval. Second. So I just want to point out, since these are public meetings, but they're not on camera. In the last one, March 6th, is that is the meeting where we actually voted on the budget, and I thought for the purpose of getting on camera and transparency, that Bob motioned to approve the town budget. Scott seconded it, and we unanimously voted in favor of the town budget. And then again, Bob motioned and Scott seconded the recommendation of the Board of Education budget, and again, that budget was voted on unanimously. So for those of you who weren't there, which is everyone, now you know how we all voted on those two budgets. Any other discussion? All in favor? We skipped over our executive session. Do we want to try to do that now, or do we want to wait for the other meeting?
I can pass. I can pass.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, first Selectmen's comments. I do have some comments I'd like to read tonight. I'd like to set the record straight on the field here at Town Campus and talk about the overall process and the decisions that we made. This project was originally estimated $150,000 for baseball field reconstruction in the capital improvement plan that was presented to me when I first took office. I originally thought it was too high based upon the scope presented to me and recommended that it be reduced to $30,000. The baseball people appealed, and the Board of Finance reinstated the $150,000 citing the need to fix deficiencies that could be run into safety and/or playability. Given that parameter, we proceeded with the process to bid out the project. Project was designed by town personnel not to exceed $150,000, but when we went off to bids, the lowest bid received was $285,000. I felt that going back to the Board of Finance for additional money because of poor estimating was not an option, and so we were forced to make a decision, scrap it altogether, or try to salvage the project and stay within the budget. An issue arose from the baseball community about the safety of the field. Madison baseball had identified several components of the field that caused concern. They included drainage at third base, the infield surface, spectator fencing along the third baseline, topographical irregularities, and some other issues that they thought might constitute safety concerns, including sidelines and backstop clearances. Working with our risk management firm, Kerma, we had discussions about the sidelines and backstop clearances. References that engineers use when building fields call for certain distances that are used as recommended guidelines. Kerma advised that the dimensions were recommended distances only, and that adjusting the dimensions was not required or mandated. It's a town where to construct a new field, we can consider whether we should meet the recommended distances. That was not the case with this complex. On January 17th of this year, I met with the representatives of baseball to discuss what else we could do to make the field work. We came up with a list of components that they wanted incorporated into the project, including a tension netting system that would serve as a backstop along with their estimated costs. I always made it clear that we would do whatever we could do as long as we came in at or under budget. This list became our field project. It then went to our engineering department for costing. Once the costs were determined to be within budget, they started to order materials and services. Projects like this always take more time than anyone would like, so coordination with suppliers and contractors was key. We were lucky to have a warm February and got some of the excavation work done then. Unfortunately, March came in and went out like a lion, and it slowed down the project. I try to keep a close watch on projects relative to their budget and the cost of cumin. On March 1st, I received a project financial summary totaling almost $97,000. There were fourteen distinct expenditures listed, and four of them had no amount listed, meaning that the project would exceed that $97,000. When I asked, I was told that we would probably be close to 110. On April 6th, I received an updated project financial summary with now twenty-eight distinct expenditures totaling over $146,000, with three not having a cost assigned to that, including one that had been priced before. This was cause for great concern as far as I was concerned, as that item had been worth over $10,000 in the prior report. Very next day, I sent an email to the baseball representatives telling them what was going on and what we would have to do to remain within budget, which included elimination of the dugouts, which they had originally offered to build when the project was first discussed. They expressed their dismay and suggested that Beach and Rec use their budget to pay for several items like bases and pitchers' mats. I explained that these costs are rightly associated with the field and that they should be included. I felt taking money from another budget to bring down the expenditures here was not appropriate nor fiscally transparent. The town cannot maintain transparency in budgeting and estimating project costs if we borrow money from another land item to complete a project. This project has not been about my process. It's my responsibility as first Selectmen to ensure that public funds are being used appropriately and in a transparent manner. To have the original scope of the project estimated at no more than $150,000, have the bids committed nearly double that amount, and to be facing cost overruns is not acceptable. This holds true not only for this field, but for any municipal project falling under my charge. I've been a major supporter of all things relative to sports. I was president of Little League for sixteen years. In fact, I helped build the original field at Town Campus. Regardless of how much I support the initiative, I cannot allow taxpayer money to be spent unchecked or not budgeted for appropriately. My hope is that in the end, the complex is a success and is a source of pride for Madison and Madison baseball. Sometimes, to do things the right way takes time. Thank you. Open up. We've done citizen comments already, so I'll move right into the agenda, number five.
Excuse me, Tom. I'd like to add an agenda item tonight. Discussion of the federal grant on the Sherline-Greymay Trail. We discussed it at a meeting one or two back, and we said we'd pick it up again, and I think I'd like to do that tonight.
Okay, you want to open the agenda now?
No, it can be much later in the agenda. I just want to add it as an item.
Remind me as we get there, okay? Number five, discuss and take action to approve proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Caleb Joshua Isaacson. I think it's your turn, Scott.
What am I doing? Am I reading? Okay, great. All righty. Whereas the Board of Selectmen of the town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America, whereas throughout his commitment to the community with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of the board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievements of Caleb Joshua Isaacson, done this 24th day of April 2017 in the town of Madison, Connecticut. And it will be signed by all the Selectmen.
Motion? I guess that's a motion. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, you bet.
Bruce?
So I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas the Board of Selectmen of the town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America, whereas throughout his commitment to community with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, it is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Brennan Kutress, done this 24th day of April 2017 in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the third one? Bob was not reading.
Sure.
Let me just discuss and take action to approve proclamation honoring Steve Philippone. So moved.
Whereas Coach Steve Philippone has served as the head football coach at Danahann High School from 1989 through 2016. And whereas Coach Steve Philippone has led the Hand Football Team to 223 victories. And whereas Coach Steve Philippone has led the Hand Football Team to seventeen league divisional championships, twelve playoff appearances, and seven state championships. And whereas the leadership of Coach Philippone to the Danahann Football Team was named number one in the state in 1997, 2004, and 2013. And whereas Coach Steve Philippone received national and local recognition for his dedication, support, and guidance of Madison's high school football players. Now therefore, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge achievement of Coach Steve Philippone, done this 24th day of April 2017 in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
Thank you, Bob. And I'd just like to say, I went to his—I had a dinner honoring Steve yesterday at Abernathy's in New Haven, and it was—there were 270 people that showed up. It was packed, full, and it was a great, really a great send-off for a great coach.
There's a couple of great videos that they posted about it, too, which is appreciated.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, number eight, discuss and take action on allowing cannon fire as part of the 1812 legislature during the July 1st fireworks presentation pursuant to photo ordinances town of Madison, section eight dash one fireworks. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
How big is the cannon?
It's actually a shotgun.
If it's a cannon, it uses a shotgun shell. It used to be a starter's pistol with a .55 barrel. Not that same.
No double O button.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss and take action on setting a referendum date on the town and school budgets for Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, pending approval of dollar amounts from the Board of Finance. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the notice. Number 10, discuss and take action to approve a pilot program for the town of Madison's summer hours scheduled affecting Town Campus offices, Madison, U.K., and the senior center as follows. Commencing June 1st and ending September 4th, hours will be Monday to Wednesday, 8:30 to 4:00, Thursday, 8:30 to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. The intent of this action is to provide service to the public beyond the traditional workday hours by staying open late on Thursdays. Schedule will be evaluated after September to determine whether the hour changes assist the public in a positive manner. So moved. Second. Any discussion?
Can we work the same hours?
Actually, Scott would be happy if he did.
Yeah. Oh, my God, that'd be great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Update on the bid awards for the LED pendant luminaries on Wall Street for HZ Electric. Bill McMinister here to—
I'm right here. I was over there before. I was hiding over there.
I was placement. I walked in, he walked away.
So the Wall Street project is part of the overall street lighting project that, you know, I've been helping out Woody Wise, chairman of the Energy Committee. So there's a memo in the file I think that you have that I wrote to Tom to award to the low bidder HZ Electric, the lights for Wall Street. They were the low bidder, you know, the specifications were recommended they be presented, given the project. We also asked for a special appropriation to cover the costs, and I do have some more information about the big project, if you want to hear that, or just want to hear about the Wall Street project.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Cool.
All in favor?
Do we have—we worked with this vendor before? Is it a vendor we have experience with?
I personally haven't worked with them, but I believe Woody has.
Are they the ones that have been doing the rest of the town?
No, that's—these are special decorative lights that we've got for Wall Street. What we've had in the past is these, they call them decor lights.
Yes.
And so we're replacing them with lights that are similar to lights downtown, the new lights downtown.
I'm confident that Woody invented that, very carefully, and that they're competent.
We use them all the time. Downtown, downtown decker, the luminaires came from them, the Wall Street poles just came from them, the town garage lights.
And these are all budgeted in the downtown project?
No, this is not budgeted in the Town Town project. This is a special appropriation that we asked for, and we're going to hopefully get, and then we're going to be reimbursed as part of the street lighting project. We bought the streetlights, you know, we reduced our costs when we bought them. Now we're using the LEDs, you know, we're going to get reimbursed for the upfront cost. We're anticipating a 0% loan paid back in four years out of our utility costs, and then after four years, we'll be having a very big net saving.
So the bill is signed, bill at roughly our same rate of, you know, monthly rate that we get now. And then after four years, that drops off, and our bill will fall roughly from 52,000 a year to—
Fifteen. We estimated some repair costs, maybe more like 12.
Did we vote?
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, discuss and take action—oh, I better say this extra loud. Discuss and take action to award the contract for the construction of the Strong Center Fieldhouses to Patmonter Construction Company, thinking in the amount of $481,024.
I'll pass this up.
So moved.
Second. Second.
So this is the result of three rounds of bidding. First two rounds, all done in every compliant way possible with no success. We had one bidder, it was fairly tentative, it never came through on one round of bidding. We did a third round of bidding, really retweeted according to Mike's directives and other people's suggestions. We had seven bidders, and we had two bidders that were under the $500,000 cap, and I can— if everything works, and we will, right, if everything works, we'll actually have exactly when we drew the full buildings done, and if everything works, it'll— what we drew, the full buildings done, and if everything works, it'll be more or less ready for the first game. So this is about as good as we could get.
More than.
That's all, that's all. After that, we raised the private funds to do the plaza, which we'll come to for donation blessing. Yeah, and we, we think we can do the whole plaza exactly as drawn to, so that probably sometime during the season, we'll be completely complete after only nine and a half years.
That's not bad.
Do the same question as before, but is it, have we worked with Patmunder? Do we know that?
Well, Tom works with Patmunder a lot, and I've also known him independently a lot, and he's a total stand-up guy. Next higher bidder is also a total stand-up guy, and is the, is actually going to be doing the plaza. So this is actually one of those rare circumstances where two low bids reinforce each other, and the other guys weren't, just their pencils weren't as sharp. And we answered a zillion questions as the architects and gave all the answers to everybody.
Same specs, I'm assuming.
So, yeah, and heavily rigorously analyzed specs, and the town's helping us with services, and we've gotten some other volunteers to do the septic labor, and they've gotten utility companies to help run the lines. So the town ends up probably with something around $3 million, and are probably getting more like a three and a half million dollar project because of all the donations that are not even counted in the over a million dollars of private monies that we've raised. So that it's an incredible coup for the town to have. According to Coach Ciati, who I trust, it will end up being the nicest town athletic facility in the state when it's all done, so.
And just like to say, one of the most important things, and one of the problems that we had in bidding was the fact that we had this $500,000 limit, and we had to commit under that, and I thank Mike for rewriting the bid to, you know, make that possible and sort of do all the work you did and your firm did, you know, all along the way, but especially at this last step, because this was, you know, this was our, our last shot.
This is it?
Thank you very much. So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number 13. Discuss and take action to approve recommending changes to the Board of Finance policy procedures, Section 2 appropriations to reserve in capital projects funds.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so basically, does anyone want to talk about this? Is this just to remove road names from the...
From the legal notice? And this was at the request of John?
John and Board of Finance also.
The CIP.
Yeah, the CIP, the whole discussion was in CIP, so it has to go to the Board of Finance to remove it from the regulation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14. The following line transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a single action by the Board of Selectmen as so desired. The board member may request removal of any line item, line transfer item from the consent agenda for review and discussion.
So moved.
Second.
To approve line transfers totaling $1,700. Your motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Tom, can we do the Shoreline Greenway Trail at this point?
So you're making a motion to open it again?
I would like to do that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, um...
If it's okay with you, Tom, I'd like to start a discussion. We've had an exchange of letters with the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and the town was awarded a grant, I guess, almost a decade ago for adding to the Shoreline Greenway Trail, and I guess this exchange of letters recognized that federal government or through the state is asking us to get on the stick, and we're going to make use of these monies to get started here. And I wanted to ask Mike if he could just describe what's been done so far and what are the next steps to make sure we don't lose the money?
Okay, so we have, we have, we received approval for this segment of the Shoreline Greenway Trail that we'd like to design and construct. It runs from the town line at the East River on Route 1 on the south side. As far as we can go, as the money will allow, for design purposes, we went easterly into Madison underneath the railroad overpass at Nathan's Lane, stopped during the pass that, right at Nathan's Lane, just east of the railroad underpass. We received approval, we did a conceptual plan and a conceptual cost sent to the DOT for review. We also, at the same time, applied for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant in the amount of some $300,000, I believe. And we understand that we want to receive an official approval, but the state may, may be able to reward us that money as we go forward with Shoreline Greenway Trail project, separate source of funding. That's where our, where we stand right now. The state, I think that letter that we received... So our earmark, our federal earmark is our own, Madison's. The towns of Branford, Guilford, and East Haven have a combined, have a combined federal earmark. I think it was issued around, or maybe the same timeframe, but they have Branford, the town of Branford is actually going out, is about to, I think, go to construction, so they've made progress. So although Lieutenant Guilford hasn't gone to construction, and I don't think the state has, they didn't receive a similar letter as we did because Branford, within that earmark group, Branford has been in progress. That letter that we received is, is asking us, I believe, to give the state a schedule. I think, I think the words were a clear path to construction or, or something to that effect. I think they're looking, they're looking for us to lay out a schedule to get, get through the process to design and review and approval process, and then be able to advertise the project for construction and actually go into construction.
And who's responsible for that, Mike, just so I understand?
For what?
The clear path for construction. Who would, who would create that construction plan, whatever that plan is?
Uh, we would, I would, you know, we have to, I think what they're asking for is for us to lay out a schedule. In other words, we will, you know, begin, begin the preliminary engineering work on this date, and it's anticipated it will be completed by this date, and the first review will be submitted to the state of Connecticut by this date, that kind of thing, bring it all the way through, you know, give them, give them a schedule, what we think the design and new approval process is going to take, the bidding process will take, and the construction process will take, and at the same time, request an extension, which I think you did in your letter.
Has this board been provided with those plans?
I don't think you've seen the plan. I think we did, when Jane was here, Jane Raff was here at, several months ago, I believe, and we went, we went through this, exactly what I'm describing now, we went through where we're at. But I don't think you've...
Mike, didn't this, didn't this board about six months ago tentatively approve a concept about the trail?
I think maybe that was why, I don't recall.
I think it was about, it was about a year ago when you approved locating it where Mike has just described, because originally the plan had been to put it between Scotland Avenue and, Scotland, Scotland Avenue and Lover's Lane. So, so that, I think that was last April, but my, you know, I'm old, my memory is old.
So I recollect, I recollect that perfectly, and I'm going to ask you to refresh our memories maybe collectively after the meeting.
Yeah.
But I, I remember it as a preliminary exploration. I don't remember it as an approving of a route.
Right.
Oh, yes, it was definitely approving the route. Because, because Mike had to take it to DOT and say, here's where we want to do it, and that's what DOT has approved, is that right, Mike?
I think it was in April, actually. I had to write, I had to write a letter. DOT requested that we write a letter, the town write a letter to them requesting approval of the segment to construct initially that was going to be between Scotland Avenue and Lover's Lane. That got, and that was approved by the previous Board of Selectmen, and we submitted that, that segment to DOT. And then I think early on, when Tom came in the office, and we talked about changing the segment from the East River to Nathan's Lane, we had to write a letter to DOT requesting approval for that change, and I think, and it was about April, I think, you're right.
I think it was last April. Well, and then the other point is that the reason for the change was that there wasn't enough money for the, it wasn't even close to enough money for the segment, for the, for the original segment.
Okay, well, so my concern there is that we've approved...
We have, we approved, looking at, did we approve?
We approved a new route, or did we approve looking at the new route?
We approved looking at the new...
All right, so, so at least, at least getting to the design phase of it, because there hasn't been any public input at all on this.
And that's, that's our next step, is we need to have some public hearing.
All we've done so far is, like I said, we did a concept plan and a conceptual opinion cost as required by DOT.
Okay, okay, that's...
That's all we, that's as far as we've gone.
Is there any risk, though, of losing the funds if we don't submit something by a certain date?
The way I read that letter, they're looking to us for exactly what I just said, they're looking for us to formally request an extension of the time that we responded, but I think they're also looking for us to lay out a schedule for how to, how to get there. That's my, that's my take on reading that.
What has to happen by what date? Is there a date, is it in August? Does something have to happen by August?
August, August is the 10-year, sometime in August is the 10-year anniversary of the grant of the earmark, the award of the earmark. I think what, I don't have the letter for anybody, but I think that letter said, need to respond to us by, I think it was last Friday, giving, giving, you know, requesting an extension and laying out a schedule for construction. So we need, I think the piece we're missing is laying out the schedule. And once we lay that out, even if it's a two-year time period, I'm assuming that they will grant our request for an extension and approve the schedule, and we'll have another two years to, to execute.
Well, what does this Board of Selectmen need to do at this point in time?
I, I just think, I don't think you need to do anything other than, yeah, I guess I should lay out a schedule if it's okay, and then you, and then, you know, you guys will take a look at it, and that's what we will submit up to DOT.
Actually, that'd be a good thing for us to include in the public hearing, too. Schedule that inclusion.
But I, I'm guessing they're going to want a schedule relatively soon, maybe, are you planning to hold a public hearing soon?
Yeah, I think I said June, starting June, in the letter.
So it's time to move this to the front burner?
Right.
What's the impact of Guilford not approving Bear Trail on our track?
You mean if they don't go forward?
Well, they, they already voted not to go forward.
Well, it's our, Tom and I met with Guilford first election, Town Engineer, it's our, and I talked to the Town Engineer recently, and they, it's my understanding that after they get through their budget process, after their budget is approved, hopefully, they're going to start again, they're going to redesign that section, right, Tom?
Their budget was approved, it was...
Oh, it was? And they're going to move, and they're going to move it, going to move forward on that, on that same section, we're modifying it somehow, but on that same section of trail.
They've been allowed to make some changes to the original specifications, right? I mean, originally it had to be 10 feet wide and...
And it's going to be...
Yeah, but it couldn't be concrete, it's maybe concrete.
Right, right, right.
So there, there are changes that we can incorporate into our process to...
So just to conclude, sometime in the next month or so, this will be back on our agenda. I'm turning it into a question.
Yeah.
And then we'll be calling a public hearing shortly.
Yep.
Excellent. And could we ask the Shoreline Greenway Trail folks if...
Just get the date in.
Tell us how you really feel, Jane.
Yeah, if you'd been part of that, that'd be really wonderful. My understanding, Mike, is that we're required to have, at least one public hearing, maybe even more, after the design is done, is that right?
During, separate from, I think, the public hearing or public meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I think what, what you're talking about, that first step is not really a public hearing, in a legal sense, it's a public information session or whatever.
During, during the design process, we're required to hold public information meetings or meetings. I think what, I think what Tom, Craig and Tom, Tom's talking about is holding some public information meetings prior to the beginning of actual design.
Get some input into that.
Yeah.
I mean, because in Guilford, what happened was they had the whole thing ready to go, and then public back, you know, the big backlash, and just stopped everything, and, you know, I mean, I think there were avoid that kind of problem, if we can get public input ahead of time, and get super excessive ones, we'd be, we'd move along without more speed.
I think our, our next step is to lay out that schedule as far as I can tell from my letter.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I can also tell you what you approved in April 2016, everybody.
Sorry?
I can tell you what you approved in April 2016. It was April 11, 2016. You had a discussion about moving the Amherst Trail, and the motion was moved by Selectman Walker and seconded by Selectman Wilson to expand federal grant dollars which has been allocated to the Town of Madison, the scope of the project, for the scope of the project to expand the Shoreline Greenway Trail from the East River to the Guilford Town Line.
Thank you. Thank you. That makes us all so much more elucidated.
Actually, actually, if you listen to what she said, I'd forgotten about this, it said from the East River to the Guilford Town Line, which is the same thing. Short.
Across the street.
Short trip.
Okay. Number 15. Appointments. Lieutenant Terary to the Battle Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire on January 1, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Janine Hay to the Committee for Land Acquisition for a term to expire January 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Virginia Raff is an officer in the South Meadow Park Governance Committee for a term to expire January 1, 2020.
So moved. Who's this, Virginia Raff?
Aye.
All in favor?
Tom, this might be a propitious moment to ask ourselves about the Committee for Land Acquisition. I'm not sure that body is met in many a year, and I think as a Board of Selectmen, we should either reinvigorate it or disclose it, and maybe at a future meeting, we can have that on the agenda.
Is there, is there a current chair?
Maybe we should do a review in general of origin commissions, because there's another one, I think.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, the original title was school site acquisition and... All right. That's why we're looking for school sites to build schools.
You're dating yourself again.
Number 16. Tax evasion and refunds.
I move with the grant tax evasion refunds the amount of $1,621.83.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens comments? Hearing none? Number 18. Lee...
Thanks, Citizens Comment, sure. Ken Corone, Heatherwood Drive. You read the mic. Can't hear me, Ken? It's more of a camera. Yeah. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Ken Corone, Heatherwood Drive, I just want to make a few comments regarding what the First Selectmen had discussed earlier regarding the Town Campus Baseball Field. We see the progress out front here. The First Selectmen recapped kind of a timeline there and provided some details. Hopefully, that gave most of us an opportunity to understand where we are right now. Certainly not all the details were provided. There's probably been two dozen meetings over the last couple of years. But a couple of things Tom had mentioned that I want to clarify, they are not necessarily in agreement with his assessment of things. I think one of the reasons why we're at this impasse on the budget, we're at about, from what the Selectmen said, $146,000, we have $150,000 that's been approved. Part of that is because there is an area that was designated for Beach and Rec. Tom had mentioned that and said, we requested that Beach and Rec start using their funds for this project. That is not actually, actually what transpired. We never requested that. We were informed that was the case. So we were in meetings with the First Selectmen, Selectman Murphy was there, Mike, Town Engineer was there, when Beach and Rec and Tom and Scott Erskine, Director of Beach and Rec, informed us they were using their budget for certain parts of this project. So that's a big part now that Tom has decided to take that money away and force it into this budget. I'm not sure why that's happened. We've asked several times, no answer has been forthcoming. The, the last Fields Committee meeting, I asked the Director of Beach and Rec why that was done, he shrugged. When I asked him if he could tell me who told him to move that money in, he said, Tom made me. So we're wondering why over $5,000... So we're wondering why over $5,000 has been now put into this project. This is not unusual for that money to be used by Beach and Rec. When the other baseball fields and other projects around town have been done through the capital improvements plan or project, Beach and Rec has always tripped in money. And we were informed they were doing the same on this project. Now that's been taken away. So that $5,500 or approximately, that I think Mike could speak, maybe I'm not pretty to the, the budget and all the numbers, but that's certainly been disappointing, and it's been a big reason why we're now up against the top end of the budget that's been approved. In addition, the first selectman made a decision to lower the outfield arc fence height from six feet to four feet. We did not request that. We were kind of opposed to that, but he made that decision. The town had already owned the six-foot fence. So there is no returning that fence. That was, from what I understand, now an additional cost of $2,500 approximately. And that six-foot fence is a fence now that is not going to be used. It's owned by the town, it'll be used in future projects, I'm told, which will offset the cost of other projects. Yet that money's being billed to this budget as well. I guess at the end of the day, we have $9,000 worth of money that should not be in this budget, in my humble opinion and many others. We were told it wouldn't be in the budget, and if you take that $9,000 off the $146, we do have enough money to complete the dugouts there. It's the labor of the dugouts. I think it'd be great to finish this project, not have this money put into our, our operating budget or this project budget, where Scott Erskine has told me he has this money available. I asked him if he had planned for it, if he hasn't, and he said yes. So he doesn't know why it's been put in there, other than Tom told me. That's not an answer that any of us really think is appropriate. If there's a reason, tell us. Just don't treat us differently than other projects have been treated. And, and don't do things that just make this project a personal, what seems like a personal situation for the first selectman, who's on record, even tonight, saying he's never liked the project, he's against the project, he doesn't think it's necessary. Others disagree. So at the end of the day, I, I hope if we allow Beach and Rec to do what they were willing to do, what we were told they were doing, without even requesting it, that we're back on track and we can finish these dugouts. There's also mention by the first selectman that baseball, and he's speaking about me, said we would build the dugouts. That's not the case. I did have conversations with him, saying I had spoken to two people who said they'd be willing to donate some of the labor. That's a big project to build, two 30-foot dugouts. And the cost is somewhere around $12,000 worth of labor. These two individuals, I go back to, including this week, and they are not willing to donate $12,000. They have to pay crews and everything else. They will bid on this project and do it less than others, but they're not, especially in light of the way this budget has been handled, the way this has been managed, the delays, the non-decisions, and frankly, the lack of proper oversight or management, they're not willing to forego that amount of money on a personal level to get this project finished. We're so close here, we're going to lose this spring season. I hear the field's going to be offline in the fall again. So it, it's just unfortunate that something so small in the vast, this big budget this town has, a once every 20-year project, that now we're doing things instead of working together to make this happen. We can make this happen at 150 with the Beach and Rec monies that were allocated to that. And in the past, I'm told, whenever these things came up, over many, many years, and we're talking about around a year of a couple of thousand dollars, that's it, that everybody would find a way to make it happen, not find a way to not make it happen. I, I just want to make sure the record shows that we never said we paid for dugouts, and we did not ask Beach and Rec ever to pay for those items. We asked why Beach and Rec was no longer paying for items we were told they were paying for. And that's an important distinction for hundreds of families who've been waiting patiently for five years now to see progress on in, in what's right in this town for a growing sport league or not, and the high-stuited baseball field in this town. So that was my, that was my willingness to speak tonight, to be here to see what was being discussed regarding town camps. Thanks for, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, move on to liaison reports? Or selectmen comments? Who wants to go first?
So I don't have a liaison report as such. I want to express my thanks to Scott Erskine for the work that he did on cleanup, cleanup day. He was disdally running around between the North Station and the South Station, making sure that everybody had what they needed, setting up, breaking down. And I'd also like to thank everybody who showed up. We didn't quite fill up the...
Over 200 people.
We didn't quite fill up the dump truck in North Madison, but we had some people who were trying hard.
The one downtown is overfilled, so. Had to leave stuff on the side, so I worked out well. Thank you.
The Board of Police Commissioners was delighted to hear that our communication equipment investments are already paying off, that the communications between police officers and, and the home base down here have improved dramatically as our new system is getting implemented. And that's good for all of us. And I'm also pleased to report that the Library Expansion Building Committee, which we just named in our last meeting, has had not one but two meetings already. So they're off to a flying start.
Think so.
You good?
I'm good. You can go first.
Okay. So a couple of things. One, I wanted to share with you, and I can share it to the screen here. There's a special education day that is happening at the State Capitol that several of our legislators are going to. There's a bus that's going to be leaving from one of the schools. It's on May 2nd, Tuesday, May 2nd, from 10 to 12. All are welcome to attend. Registration in advance is requested. It is through Septo, and there is an info at septoalliance.org if anybody has any questions. There's limited time available, but there will be a bus going. Should be a great day. So I wanted to make sure I said that. Second, the ambulance committee met, and they are going to be selling flags for future holidays as a fundraiser. So that is, I think, also good news, that they're going to have those available for Memorial Day, for my fourth, et cetera, and are going to make that one of their revenue generating opportunities. So I thought that was cool. You stole my thunder on the building committee, so thank you for mentioning that out. And then lastly, I did want to just publicly thank Mike Ott for all his services relative to this baseball field. I know that this project has been a challenge, you know, several of the comments expressed by the first selectmen and Ken Corone here tonight. And Mike is sort of at the crux of a lot of what's going on here. And I just wanted to make sure that I personally thanked you. I've been witness and involved in all of the baseball field projects that you've done here in town. And I can't tell you what a great job you do each and every day. So thank you for all your effort and hard work.
My report on the Board of Education may be redundant, since we already know that. But I do have a couple of comments.
Going to hold this up?
No. The, this is the first time we've had an opportunity to comment on the Board of Finance budget proposal. We recommended a budget to the Board of Finance that had included an increase over 2016 of 1.7% for the town. I fail to see the necessity of increasing our requested budget. Board of Finance negated the hours of work that we, the Board of Selectmen, spent on developing a budget that what we felt was adequate for the town for 2017. It was consensus by the Board of Selectmen, as a matter of fact, we approved it was a vote by the Board of Selectmen to recommend that budget to the Board of Finance. And I fail to see why they have increased the town budget by far more than we felt was necessary. I also have a comment about the school facilities plan. Board of Education has spent almost three years developing a plan for the schools. There was considerable public input, input from several professionals representing architecture, engineering, planning, and education. In addition, the bonded consultants outlined the finance options for the two options under consideration. One of the options appears to have a higher cost in the short term. The potential for reaching our bonded debt with the other option could put the town in a difficult position if they needed to bond for a project or major equipment. And we've been assured by the superintendent, and I know for a fact the Board of Education, that good instruction is going to take place on all our schools, no matter what choice we make. Even if we chose not to do anything right now, we would still have excellent education in the town of Madison. My, my big concern is something called buyer's remorse. If we go through the town with a $65 million budget and it passes, are they going to be passing Board of Education budgets in the future? I think the position taken by the board is a modest proposal, which has no guarantee of passing referendum, but certainly, I believe, it would pass easier than a $65 million referendum.
Thank you. That's it. Okay. The only thing I have, I just wanted to follow up on something. You talked about the ambulance.
Yes.
The Ambulance Association is hosting a business with a twist on the 26th. And encourage anybody to go. It's cheap, it's like 10 or 15 bucks.
Thank you for that.
But it's a great opportunity to get inside the ambulance center to see the facility. So it's going to be right there at the, at the ambulance center.
Are we going to go to the...
Oh, yeah.
Can I move that we go to executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I invite Deb in?